It's seven o'clock. We'll go ahead and call a council meeting to order. Roll call.
Peterson.
Here.
Krupsek.
Here.
Shemansky.
Here.
Wayack.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Wenzel.
Here.
Hamilton.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
First on the agenda is approval of the previous minutes. We have minutes from October 14th, October 29th, and November 4th.
So move.
Second.
Motion second to approve the three previous minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is treasurer's report.
So move.
Motion second for the treasurer's report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nothing under citizens' forum. We have, or do we?
No, these are.
Both with, okay. Then we'll go into regional economic growth initiative with Jason.
Thank you. Introduce yourself.
Yeah, yeah. We run an efficient meeting here. Moving quick. First, we'll start off. I just want to say thanks for giving us the time tonight to provide you with a little bit of an update on the regional economic growth initiative. And I guess most of you have heard of it to some degree, but we'll talk a little bit more about it tonight, give you an idea of what we've done the past year here, a little bit idea how it formed, and talk about some of the things that Reggie is looking at doing in this year here. First off, introductions. I'm Jason Greenberg, the director of Wood County Planning Office, and the vice chair of Reggie. And with me are John Bergen. He is the chair of Reggie. And my wife is gone this week, so my kids are keeping an eye on me. And we have Ella, and we have Taylor. And they're not going to be speaking here, unless you have anything to say, do you? No?
All right.
But starting off, Reggie has been around for a few years here. Formed in August of 2011. Leading up to that, the Encouraged Community Foundation had a company or consultant to economic scan of the region to look at possible economic opportunity. And one of the things that came back is that in the region here, we really have to act more collaboratively when it comes to economic development. We can't just, you know, have everybody running in different directions, focusing on their own community. We really have to work together as a region and for the betterment of economic development here. So we did form a collaborative. In that collaborative, we have a variety of people, not just government, which is a good thing. We do have county government represented there, municipal government, MSTC, other education there. We have some businesses like Oracle Chemical, Core Enso, Ocean's Berry Cranberries. We have some nonprofits that are involved with the collaborative, including the Encouraged Community Foundation. Also, workforce development board has been involved. And so it's really, really a neat diverse group, and this is something new, a new approach to economic development in the area. Rather than just having one person or one entity focus on things, we're having everybody come to the table and getting different perspectives and trying to get some consensus. So that's a little bit of, you know, how Reggie formed. In the past year, we've really spent a lot of time doing some work that really hasn't been all that, I guess, exciting or glamorous. We've really been creating Reggie as a 501(c)(3), so in the future, we can act more as an organization. And also, we've developed a board. We have a board now, and we have elected positions for that board. So we have more of a structure in place now moving forward, which is really something we felt we needed to have, especially if we're working with, you know, community dollars and dollars from private business to encourage economic development. As far as funding, we have a pretty clever approach as well. We're not all being funded just by government or private funds, but it's kind of a mix. We have the county putting some money towards Reggie. We have municipalities putting money towards Reggie. We're looking at having some businesses contribute in the future here. That's one of our tasks we'll work on this year. Also, the Encouraged Community Foundation gave us some seed money to get things going. I believe it was, was it $300,000 or $200,000?
$200,000.
$200,000. So that funding really has helped us, you know, kind of get things rolling here. Another thing we've been working on this past year is an asset inventory. And I know Bill knows a little bit about that because he's actually talked with the consultants that are working on this asset inventory. And what we're really looking at in the region is, you know, what capacity do we have here? What makes us unique as far as attracting business? What type of business can succeed here? Because we want to know where our weaknesses are. We also want to know where our strengths are, so we can market this area honestly with businesses out there and possibly see some growth. And our goal is that maybe we can find possibly somebody for an inclusive business park or the New Buren Business Park, and as a result, you know, get more jobs in this area, because right now, people need jobs. One of the focus that Reggie has taken from the start, too, has been on manufacturing. I think, you know, since we've been meeting the last few years, we're kind of open to other opportunities as well. But one reason we've focused on manufacturing is because that's something this region's been built on. It's something that we're good at. There's also a high multiplier with manufacturing dollars. Manufacturing, for every dollar that's made in manufacturing sales, a dollar forty-two is made in the supply chain. So, and also the wages with manufacturing are rather high. In Wood County, they're at, I think, $52,000, which is just below the health field. So that's, you know, kind of our focus, but we are open to other opportunities with, you know, growing the economy in the region here. In the year ahead, we're looking at hiring somebody to kind of lead the efforts of Reggie. Right now, we have a board that's mostly people who have other jobs and other things we're working on. We're looking at somebody who can take the lead for Reggie and coordinate a lot of the efforts that are being done in the community right now. You know, and one question we get all the time is, you know, we have a lot of things going on as far as economic development. Why do we need this other layer out there right now? You have Synergy, that's a regional economic development organization. You have Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation, the state. You have different local chambers. You have the county doing economic development. You have the CUSA spending dollars on economic development. But we really feel that we need somebody out there kind of bringing everything together, kind of being the point person, bringing all these resources together so we're more coordinated. I must say, in the last few years, working with Reggie group, it's been really encouraging to see a lot of dialogue taking place amongst the people there. You know, I'm confident now that if we have business opportunities in the area, we'll better be able to address those opportunities more quickly and have a better chance of, you know, succeeding. So, you know, and some of the things we're looking at in the coming year as well, we're looking at getting more communities involved with the regional economic growth initiative. Right now, we have, I think it's like five or six communities that are partially funding Reggie's efforts. And we're hoping to grow that number as time goes on. One of the challenges, though, that we're facing is some of the communities are more rural, and they don't really feel that they have, it really impacts them much. But in reality, it does. I mean, you have towns like Rudolph and Seneca. They don't have a lot of business, but most of the people that live there are working in the CUSA, Rapids, you know, those areas. Same with Towne and Grand Rapids, where I live. We don't have a lot of business there, but most of the people living in the Towne and Grand Rapids are working, you know, in Wisconsin Rapids, Dacusa, Buren, areas like that. So we're hoping down the road, we can get more people contributing to Reggie, and as a result, we'll have more resources to work with as time goes on.
Next, seven that are currently funding seven municipalities.
Okay, real good.
So Rome, Pittsville, Wisconsin Rapids, you folks, Grand Rapids, Village of Port Edwards, and Buren, plus the county.
Yeah, I think the question's going to, how do we calculate what municipalities would pay into Reggie? And we based it on assessed value in the communities. And communities that don't have any manufacturing, we've given them a little bit of a break because they don't necessarily see a direct impact. They'll see an impact, but they won't see a direct impact. And the funding contribution, if we have more contributors, it, in theory, will be less for communities long-term, rather than having the bigger communities that are participating bearing the brunt of it. And the county has, for the last two years, contributed $30,000, $5,500 towards Reggie. So, as I mentioned before, we're looking, we're hoping that business will be able to put some more money towards this effort, because they should see some benefit from this as well. But that's something we'll work on the year ahead. I think another thing we're going to work on in the year ahead, too, is, I mentioned the infrastructure study before. We'll have those results probably by early of 2015.
April.
Okay, April of 2015. And by that time, we should have an idea of what our deficiencies are in the area here, as far as, you know, marketing our area for new business or our business parks and things like that. We also should have an idea of what our strengths are. And if we have that, we can maybe target certain types of businesses out there that would be a good fit for the area. With that infrastructure or that asset study, we're also going to have an idea where we might have some deficiencies with, like water or water resources around here, water utilities, wastewater treatment, and those types of things. So, you know, our goal down the road is to address the most issues and also track businesses that are a good fit for us. I think I'll turn over to John here.
You didn't leave me too much.
Let John take care of everything. Go on, let's go over here.
The consultants we've hired are Lukey and Associates. They've had experience in studying rural areas in the past, so that was one of the reasons, plus the fact they have a very experienced group of members that are participating. Four individuals. They're all professionals. They've all been in the business a long time. One of the individuals is actually a site selector. He works for corporations that are looking for sites. So we should get his perspective in what an organization looks for when they intend to place a business in a particular locale. I think one of the things that Jason glossed over a little bit is we challenged him to be the chairman of a municipal forum, okay? And municipal forum is a group that we want to pull together. We want you to contribute a person to that group. And the intent of that organization is to be the communication link between Reggie board and the community that you're from, and vice versa, okay? So that we don't have a communication gap as to what's going on at Reggie or what isn't going on, okay? So this would be an ongoing standing committee. We'd actually like you to appoint someone to participate in that, okay? At this point, we have the city member of that, and we have a town of Rome member of that. We don't have any more members at this time unless you heard of some volunteers stepped up.
But we're, you know, hoping to get things, have that group maybe meet hopefully sometime this year yet. At the latest, it would be early January that we'd meet. But it's really important, because we don't want that group just to receive communication from Reggie. We want that group to have, provide input to Reggie as far as, you know, as things are going, and keep the dialogue, you know, ongoing.
One of the objectives of that group is to develop what I'll call a balanced business approach. So what is it that we're willing to have in these communities, okay, as a business? So we don't introduce something that the community is going to go into an uproar over, okay? We don't want that here, you know, and we get into a big fight over what we're planning to do or what someone is planning to do, okay? So we'd like to get in front of that. And also have a clear process as to how we make that decision. So we decide what the criteria are. You know, there are going to be pros and cons. Not everything is going to be roses. There's always some trade-off when you bring a business into a community. And we have to be realistic about that. So we need to be upfront in planning what that business process looks like. I guess at that point, I would like to say that one of the other things that has happened is we were able to obtain a $50,000 WEDC grant, okay? So your local funding is leveraged by that grant to support this infrastructure, okay? And really, the reason we got that is twofold. One is because we are working together as a region, and the state would really like to promote that. And two, they're going to use this study as a model for other communities, okay? So we've challenged the consultant that as they structure this, they should structure it in a fashion and with the intent that it'll be used by other communities, okay? So we all travel some distance often for where we work, so I think if any one of these communities lands a business, it's to the benefit of all other communities within a reasonable driving distance. So at this point, we'd entertain your questions.
Did they, I know earlier in the year, they were working on a job description for
Yes.
this full-time person that they're looking for. Has that been completed and the search started for the full-time?
Yes.
Director, if you want to call that person?
Exactly.
Okay.
We, several of us used our networks, and that wasn't real productive, so we only got a couple of candidates from that. So there is now an international organization or a national organization of economic developers. So we're going to advertise in their communications, and we just initiated that this week.
We had hoped to have somebody hired by this point, if you'd talked to us this time last year. I think one thing that happened is Reggie kind of realized we had to get some other things in order before we looked seriously at the hiring process. And as a result, we ended up creating the 501(c)(3) and taking care of that legal framework before we, you know, did any kind of aggressive search for somebody to fill that position.
So we spent several months putting together all of our governance documents and our bylaws, our articles, and non-disclosure ethics, the whole nine yards, okay? So we put that in place and formed the incorporation.
Is there a new projected hiring date?
We plan to have someone onboard by February. You know, we don't want to pick just anybody to have them by February. You're looking for the right candidate. You know, it really needs to be someone that we think has the horsepower to do the job and the interpersonal relations to work with all of you folks.
Anybody have any else?
Good questions.
The representative from IPAR, were you looking to get something like that out of this meeting, or?
Well, that's obviously your choice, but yes, we would like, we would like your continued support financially, and we would like you to designate a representative.
He's talking tonight, I think. Do you want us to make that?
No.
It doesn't have to be tonight, but we would like to have a meeting.
It won't be.
Yeah, sure. We'd expect that.
Just ask, you know, something.
Yeah, but we want that on. So it's clear that that's what we want.
We, Jim just brought up, I mean, we do have another meeting in two weeks for the budget. We could put it on the agenda that night to give everybody a chance to mull it over, and we can make that appointment that night.
That sounds good. If you have any, if you have any follow-up questions, if you want to talk about how often we might meet and things like that, feel free to give me a call. To be quite honest, a lot of those things, sort of find me. A lot of those things haven't been nailed down yet, but we can have discussion. And through that discussion, I think you get a general idea of what we're looking for as far as time commitment and meeting times, that type of thing. And that might, that might help you, you know, pick somebody that's a good fit for it then, you know, based on their availability and their schedule and that type of thing, and their background.
And Bill is, excuse me.
Go ahead. But ultimately, the choice for your representative is up to you.
Bill has already helped us, and he's met with the consultants to bring them up to speed on some of the infrastructure that is here in the CUSA and available, your park and so on, so.
Yeah, because Jason had called me about a month or so ago, and you had all the information from your team.
Yep, yeah. I invited Sean to go to that meeting, too, so Sean was there. You were there for all of ours, or most of them, or?
Most of them.
Oh, anything else? Okay. We'll put that on the agenda for the 25th and go from there.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service to your community. I know you've spent a lot of time at it, so we really appreciate it. It really takes this type of group that keeps these municipalities going.
And thank you for your support of Reggie. We appreciate that.
When we went down to that meeting, John Madison, I thought it was, well, it was great meeting. Actually, I've been getting emails.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, going to committee reports. First is Ways and Means. We have one meeting to report. I make a motion to accept the minutes as written. There's a motion second to approve the minutes of the Ways and Means as written. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? To the Honorable Mayor and members of the Cusa County Council, a Ways and Means meeting was held on November 11th, 2014 at 6:15 PM in the Cusa Council Chambers. Members present were Garrett Coon, chairperson, Terry Shemansky, secretary, Robert Schultz, Emmett Peterson. Also in attendance were Mayor Al Marco, Brad Hamilton, August Boyack, Robert Wenzel, and Chris Coon. Number one, we audited the bills. Number two, recommend $2,261 to the Heart of Wisconsin Chamber of Commerce for the Cusa community events. Number three, we denied beverage operators' license for James Porter. Number four, we denied Wisconsin Rapids Area Videos Guide for an amount of $1,500. Number five, we discussed seminars, conferences, and equipment. Item six, we had a report on the library. Make a motion. And Larry Krupsek. Well, sorry, we have, also on terms are Larry Krupsek. And just a motion for recommend number two. Second. There's motion, a second on the floor to approve item two of the Ways and Means meeting. Roll call. Peterson.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Wayack.
Yes.
Wenzel.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Krupsek.
Yes.
Coon.
Yes.
Shemansky.
Yes.
Next is Public Works.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we'll move on.
I was thinking three and four. Look at three and four, guys. Should we put recommend, deny beverage?
And I thought that should be.
Recommend, deny Wisconsin Rapids Videos Guide.
That's been voted on, actually.
Shouldn't that be voted on? I got a problem either way. What do you think?
The committee denied it.
True.
Recommend to deny. Okay. Go ahead, and Jim suggested we put recommend, denying, three and four.
So move.
I'm going to do a roll call on that. Second then.
I guess that's it. Roll call, move.
Schultz.
Yes.
Shemansky.
Yes.
Krupsek.
Yes.
Wayack.
Yes.
Coon.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Wenzel.
Yes.
Okay, there.
Okay, Public Works has one meeting to report on, and we have the next.
Second.
The motion second to approve the minutes as written. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? To the Honorable Mayor, members of the Cusa County Council, a public works meeting was held on Tuesday, November 4th, 2014 at 1:30 PM in the Cusa Council Chambers. Members present were Larry Krupsek, Terry Shemansky, Garrett Coon, and Robert Schultz. Also in attendance were Mayor Al Marco, August Boyack, Lee Emmer, and Todd Trader from MSA, Chuck Baker, Bill Caverly Sr. from the GPW, and Bonnie Yump. Item one, recommend reducing water bill for Chuck Baker to $69.27. Item two, recommend not putting a turbo crossing sign up on North Cedar Street. Item three, discuss water updates. Five water leaks found in the city so far. Item four, discuss water plant updates. Item five, we had MSA updates. Item six, discuss the streetlights. Item seven, recommend Wood County to do blacktop patching. And item eight, discuss grant information. There's no questions. We'll move to adopt items one, two, and seven.
Clear.
There's a motion and a second to approve items one, two, and seven of the Public Works meeting. Roll call. Coon.
Yes.
Wenzel.
Yes.
Shemansky.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Wayack.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Krupsek.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Next is Public Safety.
Public Safety and one meeting. A motion to accept the minutes as written.
Clear.
Motion approved the second, the motion to approve the second, the Public Safety minutes as written. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
To the Honorable Mayor and members of the Cusa County Council, a public safety meeting was held on Tuesday, November 4th, 2014 at 5:00 PM in the Cusa Council Chambers. Member present, Terry Shemansky, Robert Wenzel, Emmett Peterson, Garrett Coon. Also in attendance, August Boyack, Larry Krupsek, Mayor Al Marco, Robert Schultz, Don Harnish, Sean Woods, and Mike Archie. Number one, discuss ambulance billing. Number two, discuss safety center remodel updates. Three, recommend paying Southwood, Kellington, Main Street $7,100 for the service in 2015. Number four, recommend a special charge to the property owner of 605 Willhorn Road for boulder removal and road right-of-way in the amount of $160. Any questions? None, three and four.
Second. There's a motion and a second on the floor to approve items three and four. Roll call, move. Peterson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Wenzel.
Yes.
Coon.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Shemansky.
Yes.
Krupsek.
Yes.
Wayack.
Yes.
It's it for committee reports. I have one thing under old business. We talked about it, is public safety, the loan for the remodel. I talked to Rob the other day. He is going to rewrite it for a 10-year note for the $200,000, so I need a recommendation and approval to rewrite that.
So move. Second.
Are we going to say rewrite construction law? Yeah. It's a 10-year loan, right?
Yeah.
We can?
If we want to.
Oh, okay. All right. I don't have the interest rate. I don't know if we need that, do we, or not? It's 2.75.
Actually, very good rate.
Roll call, move.
What do you get? Hamilton.
Yes.
Krupsek.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Wayack.
Yes.
Shemansky.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Wenzel.
Yes.
Coon.
Yes.
Any else in the old business? Anything in new business?
After we get done with the other.
Monthly reports. First is police chief's monthly report.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second for the police chief's report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is Public Works.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second for the Public Works report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is ambulance departments.
So move, thank you.
Motion and a second for the ambulance department. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is the fire department's monthly report.
So move.
Second. Motion and a second for the fire department's report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is building inspector's report. Motion and a second for the building inspector's report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is community center's monthly report.
I will. Yeah.
Need a second?
No, I didn't. Who's second then?
I did second then.
I did, but.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is the airport commission report.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second for the airport commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is bills. Next is Bills.
Council meeting paid $1,043, Public Safety $325, Public Works $275, committee as a whole $385, Mayor's salary $600, and we have the bill list.
The way to probably bills is presented.
Motion and a second to approve the bills.
Okay.
Hold on. Please. Hamilton?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Grubbs?
Yes.
Wayack?
Yes.
Coon?
Yes.
Shemansky?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
You got something?
Yeah, this, this is gonna go before our next council meeting, the Cusa Hometown Christmas is gonna be on December 6th, Saturday, December 6th, 2014. A lot of stuff going on, starting out with the Breakfast with Santa, down at the Retirement Committee in Cusa, right down on the corner here, from, that's gonna be 8:00 to 10:30. Pancake, egg, sausage, juice, coffee, seven bucks adults, three bucks children, six to twelve, $500 free. Great sponsorships throughout the whole thing. We got all day thing going on, there's gonna be, they're gonna do the, down here, they're gonna do the tour, the open house tour, the new construction, what's going on. We're gonna have our fireworks at 6 o'clock, there's a parade again at 5:15, I'm kind of going backwards on it a little bit, I guess. There's flyers that are gonna be down here in the City Hall, in the main entrance there. You can pick them up there in regular business hours and I'm gonna try to scan and send it to everybody, if I can get a nice scanner to work at home, and then they'll have it on electronic, they're gonna need one, so.